Welcome back, everybody at home. When we took a break, Maria and Amy were going to do some calculations on extending the paving timeframe.
Or sidewalks.
I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
It is getting late. The form of paving, but yeah, sidewalks.
Yes, yes, it's a form of maintenance. So for sidewalks, if you'll recall, we, in the current year, did budget $250,000, so that was factored into the 15-year plan. So if we were to take the remainder and stretch it in total to 20 years, so this would be basically stretching it out 19 additional years, we would fund $200,000 a year for nine years, and then we would fund $58,182 a year for 11 years to get to the 2.44% that's remaining to complete the sidewalk and ramp work. So that would provide, if we were to recommend stretching out the plan to 20 years, that would provide $100,000 in savings to the current capital budget. Again, that was proposed with general fund cash, so that would also lower the mill rate, that $100,000 in savings to stretch it to 20 years.
So it wasn't $300,000. I was going on the assumption it was $300,000 for sidewalks, but it was.
It is, it is. It's just we did some seed money for the current year of $250,000.
Oh, okay. That was confusing me, sorry.
I'm so sorry, yeah, then for the next six years, it would have been $300,000.
I got you. Okay.
So all total, with the changes that we just made, it's what, 214? 214, 910?
Well, not if you're counting basis points, Sean.
Wait a minute, are we talking about books or baseball here?
Wait a minute.
All right, well.
But I mean, so we're essentially going back to the, without even touching CNR, we're going back with 200 and change of reductions on the cash.
Mm-hmm.
I know the problem is, again, that works for now, but we've potentially reduced our cash usage for the next two years as well. And as pressure tightens, you know, that's, we need to share that with them when we present it. Is, yeah, we can get by this year with this, however, as our cash continues to reduce, you know, it's, we're putting off what we have to do, so.
So consensus on using the 20-year schedule for the recommendation?
I'm good with it.
I think at this point, but I think we keep it in our back pocket for if, if there is a consensus for more funding for cash, that that gets back in there quickly.
Yeah.
Got it.
I don't feel good about that.
No, we don't like it.
No.
Yeah.
Shall we move on to CNR?
Mm-hmm. What's our mission here?
Prioritize.
Prioritization.
Prioritize, okay.
Do we have one that shows the ones that are truly CNR versus general fund?
So what we, what we hadn't done, and we're going to leave to the Board of Finance, there seemed to be maybe some interest there of having them sort of flag which items they would want to pay with the 416 versus the cash, at least during their capital budgeting policy discussions. So that was not something that we had proposed at this point. Again, if you had strong recommendations and wanted to say, okay, these items for the 416, these items with cash, in addition to the prioritization, you could certainly send along a recommendation to that effect as well. I know that there was an interest within their capital budgeting policy discussions to say, okay, things that are, that have a shorter, you know, useful life, or things like studies, that it would make sense to pay those things off more quickly, as opposed to items that do have a longer useful life, that perhaps, you know, using the five-year payback method for those items would make more sense. So I would say that was sort of during their, their budgeting policy, you know, discussion on that item, that was sort of where the consensus was on that.
So, and I agree with you, but given the challenges of translation the other night and making sure that we tried to show them things the same way year over year, if we did our prioritization, and our top priorities fit the 416, and then
Sure.
the next set of priorities fell to cash, might just be a clearer way to, again, I understand how we presented it, but to help smooth the road on a year-over-year, this is what we're asking for. We want it all, because we think these are priorities, but if, you know, 1 through 15 is, this is how it would look.
And perhaps a good starting point for CNR would be just, again, to make sure that there was consensus on the recommendation to remove the wayfinding signage?
I think there was.
Yeah, there is.
Okay.
So no matter what, we're putting reval last.
It's technically a Board of Finance expense.
And I will also just, excuse me, note that the items in which we identified a funding source other than the general fund, that would not affect the mill rate, because, again, those were other revenue sources. So there were a few items within, say, for example, the police, CNR items, where we had identified the private duty fund potentially as purchasing the items, as well as some items in public works, where we had identified potential revenue sources of town aid road and one particular project, the Eno Trust, and then, of course, the sewer use fund would be paying for the sewer items. So those particular items, again, pulling those out, that will not have any impact whatsoever on the mill rate.
So to me, Eric, if you undoes me.
Yes.
Like, the, the radio study is, to me, is number one, is, I mean, we've got to replace the radio.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I mean, we can't, we have to do that study, and then that's going to be our capital challenge next year. So from my standpoint, that's one. And then the condenser down at the rink is probably two.
The, which one?
The ice condenser, the 109. Because, I mean, if that goes.
Yeah.
We're going to have to do it. I want to be, we got a budget for that.
It's just a question of when, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think the, as Maria said, the plow truck was going back into our operating budget.
So the plow truck, again, we had proposed moving up, based on their policy, out of operating and into the CNR fund. So, again, that was already existing, built into the operating budget, so, again, to sort of reduce that, again, in theory, wouldn't have an impact on the mill rate, unless, for some reason, they decided to stop funding the truck.
So we're just going to leave that alone, or do we need to put that in the 416?
I think I would leave it alone, based on the feedback we've received.
Okay.
The ashbore money, I know we have that in every year, but
Tar.
is there any flexibility on that?
Didn't we cut it last year?
Well, what we did do is we tried stretching it out a bit further, so you'll see, we had tried stretching it out over three additional fiscal years initially, based on the study we had, it was to try and fund it in two years. This would ultimately actually end up stretching it out to a total of funding over four years.
But when I was listening to Tom, he seemed to say that those trees were coming down anyway. So are they going to be here in four years, or, I mean, do we know how fast they're coming down?
Yeah, I mean.
Problem is, they're coming down in the roadways, right?
No, I, I know that, but if they're coming down, that's a different thing than ashbore mitigation type work.
Can we stick that in tar?
Uh, no, I don't think we'd be able to use tar for the ashbore mitigation. I don't think it will qualify.
Even though they fall on the road?
So is mitigation actually taking down the trees, or is mitigation spraying for ashbores?
At this point, most of them, it's, it's just taking them down. I mean, if something, we're able to try and treat it to save it, that's always an option, but at this point, most of this money is being used for removal.
Okay, so just to be clear what we're talking about here.
Yeah, most of it is.
These are trees that are going to come down anyway.
Right, right. They've been infected and sort of they're, they're past the point of no return, and they'll need to come down.
Right.
So then we kind of got to put that in the priority.
How acute is the telephone situation?
I mean, it's, right, I think a number of
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah, a number of the, the components, my understanding is, are sort of, again, past the useful life and are no longer being supported by the manufacturer.
Does everybody in the building use the same phone system? Police, Board of Ed, town?
I'm not the Board of Ed, it's not the office, but town, police department, Eno, WPCA.
So potentially, that's a safety issue, if police can't receive the phone calls or can't get to the various departments of public works.
So don't forget, so we've got to do the security fencing at the pool, which is a pretty high priority.
Yes, yeah, I would definitely say that the fencing at the pool is a fairly high priority, because, again, the, the health district has noted it being deficient for several cycles now, and I'm just not sure how much longer they're going to be willing to tolerate that, as well as our insurance carrier, Kirma, has identified it as a potential risk. So I do think that is an item that needs to be of particularly high priority.
Agreed.
I may be skipping ahead a little bit. I would just ask some questions about playscapes. I think, obviously, anything that is a safety issue, we would want to prioritize, but that's perhaps an item worth some flexibility.
Try and speak to that.
Just to speak to that, the, what we talked about setting up was almost a savings account to kind of keep on top of the maintenance as it came up, and then build up to, save up, save up money to replace those playscapes. There was some equipment at Memorial Park that we'd like to replace. One of the, you know, I understand there's, we're looking for savings here. I would stress, if you're looking at the Parks and Rec CNR, to look at the paddle courts, that's a revenue stream, and we'd want to, I would personally want to keep that in, you know, that, that, it needs to get done, it's, it's six years past when it should have gotten done. So, but if you're looking at, you know, cuts, I would trade one for the other at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Eric, I mean, we have 25 things here. I mean, are we prioritizing all 25? Are we identifying our top 10?
Yeah, how many are we going to do?
What's our process here?
It's a good question.
I think, I guess, I would recommend, perhaps, if we had to lose a few of these, perhaps we suggest those to the Board of Finance.
Should we do the lowest priority items? Or, right, you could approach it, either these are our lowest priority items, or these are our most important items. I think you could approach it either way.
The deepwater wind expenses, do we have any flexibility on that?
You know, we are going to have some ongoing costs with the monitoring component. So I think that, if we were to cut it, I think we're going to incur expenses.
We're going to do it anyway, but did we just go back and say, hey, this is how much the bill was?
Right, and essentially, if you'll recall, that is somewhat what happened for current budget cycle. You know, we had estimated conservatively around a $50,000 expense, they had us cut that number down to 25, knowing that it was likely we were going to overspend, and we've overspent closer to, you know, the number that we had projected, so.
That's not unheard of.
Right, that's essentially what happened, right, in current budget year on deepwater wind, yeah.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure our message to them is clear, because we get a lot of the stuff lost in translation. If we tell them what they could cut, I mean, okay, I get that, but then there's no rank in, in what we think is the top five or top 10, but if we only tell them the top five or top 10, do they think everything else is not a priority? We need to
Well, that's why maybe we have to say, you know, these are our top five, these are our bottom five, you know, everything in the middle you could move around, but.
Well, we can A, B, C them, I mean, we can categorize them into a couple of different buckets.
Okay.
I'm just thinking if we organically just keep discussing, talking the way we're talking here, we're going to end up with a long time to rank a few items.
Maybe quickly, we can say, public safety-related items are the highest priority?
Well, we already talked about taking the
The radio.
the trust and the tars out of it, because those are being funded
Yeah, yeah.
from somewhere else.
That's out.
Do you think you have 15 items to go, or was the
Yeah, right.
So, to Chris's point, or Eric's point, I mean, the radios in the top five, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
The fencing improvement is in the top five.
Yep.
The condenser's in the top five, to me.
Yeah, I would agree.
The police cars are in the top five.
Yep.
So that's three, four.
And the ashbores.
That's four items, so, and then if you have the ashbores, that's five.
The ashbore, I mean, those are, those are things that directly impact life, safety, and insurance, right?
The, just question, the police, Chief, you mentioned this, are the educational, the cameras, are we under any legislative changes that require us to do those? There's some that were code?
Which ones?
Just, this is just the interview room recording system cameras, and
Yes.
Those are, those are always interdicted, mandated to, right?
Yes.
But that's a different fund.
I'm just trying to go through, because people look at the report, and they're saying, why aren't you taking from everything? I just want to make sure they understand the different funding sources. Some are touchable, some are accessible, and some aren't.
So we already, so we would say that wayfinding is either out or in the bottom five, right?
Yes.
Well, I think we already said that.
We have so little to work with, it's like, we go back and just keep on punching the wayfinding.
I thought we already took it down.
Yeah.
I mean, I think playscapes has got to be in the bottom.
Again, the playscapes wasn't necessarily immediately determined to be a particular one, it's to start a fund, to get in front of projects, correct?
Some of it is, yeah.
Yep, thanks, Tom.
Sorry, Tom. Still going to buy you a full truck, though.
So the
A tough time with five here.
I know.
Well, my, the five I have is the radio system.
No, no, bottom five.
Bottom five, okay.
Bottom five.
Now, the bottom five, to be clear, are we actually recommending that we don't do these things, or are we just giving these to the Board of Finance, should they decide that they need to cut something?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's, that's the camp I would follow it to.
Yeah.
Because if we, if we take it out, we're never, ever going to do wayfinding signs, because we can always take that out.
We're never going to do it?
Well, I'm saying, if we don't, if, if we're always asked to cut, we're always going to pick the wayfinding signs to cut.
That's true.
So wayfinding's number 15.
Going to the
Playscapes are number 14.
14, yeah.
We go back to the
Good job, Sean.
the radio system study, the, it, it, is it just, is it full stop, stall, the entire project?
If we don't do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we don't do this right, right, we won't have enough information to properly
There's no way to capitalize on somebody else's project, study, whichever, nothing. Okay.
I mean, this is essentially finishing the specs and then bidding the process, right?
Correct, correct.
And then we're going to buy it next year.
Right, right. So in order to prepare for a possible referendum on this project, we would need to complete this component.
That's the 2.5 million you see sitting out in 2021.
That's the, that's the big one that's going to be, you know, choke on that one.
I mean, we, we told them about it the other night, and that's, I mean, it's, you know, they, they asked all the right questions with, can we share services, and, I mean, the Chief and Maria did a great job of, you know, we've looked at that already, and, you know, pointed that there's a great presentation on it. So I think one of the takeaways is we're going to do another presentation later on with them, to help get them the level of information that we have, because, again, you know, there's an assumption out there, like with superintendents and everything else, oh, you can just share services. Well, no, our geography require, and our topography requires that most of the cost, I believe, is in how we set the towers up and how we set the darn thing up. So there's not a lot of savings opportunity there, so.
So the ones we have sitting out there now are the telephone system, the revaluation, deepwater wind, the book handler.
On the, the book handler, when we had that presentation, there had been 5,000 and something that was being paid for, what do I want to call it, like, maintenance
Some breakdowns.
on the, the existing one, but the operating budget never went down. So, in effect, we should be able to take five grand out of the book handler, because within their operating budget, I believe, because that never changed, was the annual dollars to maintain your current
I think we pay for the maintenance on the current book handler and our whole RFID system with state support money that can't go to the general fund. So it's going to come out of our operating budget.
I thought I found someone.
We, that is a project I would put up there, again, from my perspective, as, you know, really close to a high, a high priority. I mean, I definitely think what I'm hearing, again, is some consensus around some of your highest priority items. I think what I'm hearing is that, you know, with what's left, you're really struggling to prioritize something as low, and then, again, proposing to remove the wayfinding signage. I mean, that could, could be a recommendation, here are the five, or if you wanted to maybe consider the book handler, the six most, you know, important items to us, you know, playscapes are a low priority, and, you know, we're proposing, recommending the wayfinding signage be removed. I mean, that, that could be, you know, your recommendation, or, and/or your prioritization.
And then not discuss the pickup truck and the sander.
That those would be sort of more
The painting and all those other things.
Characterize those as medium priority for you.
So those would be the middle?
Like, medium priority, the other items, if, if folks feel strongly about sort of characterizing them, that those are medium priority.
Well, except for the security fencing.
The fencing is not a
Oh, sorry, that was highest.
Security fence is not a
Yep, so again, and just sort of confirming, what I think I heard is consensus, that radio system study, the ice rink condenser, the pool fencing, the cruisers, the ashbore were the five highest priority. Playscapes low priority, everything else could be characterized perhaps as medium priority, unless, you know, folks felt, felt otherwise.
But, yeah, the only thing I'll say is that, that's going right back to not funding stuff that needs to be funded, and you're just going to pay for it plus interest, you know, down the road, you know, the, so.
So I think we need to make the message clear, though, Chris, because I agree with you, is, the only thing we're actually on this was willing to give up at this point is wayfinding.
Wayfinding.
But if you're asking us the top, if you're asking us the top five and the last couple, this is, this is the God's honest truth, but you, you know, okay, so you're saving 40, 35 grand in capital.
Right.
We gave you 200 plus elsewhere, we've worked on the operating budget.
I like that approach.
We're playing ball. I mean, we're, we're not
Going back to the fact that we, you know, we just have to make some very difficult decisions in there, just, they may be, that none of this moves, maybe we just have to make a difficult decision.
Right, and, and the honest answer to them is, look, you, we've, we've showed you the next six years, so all we're going to do, if you tell us the last five don't make it, is put them in next year.
Right.
On top of everything, I mean, and again, we're just going to keep doing this.
And they'll, and a number of them are going to be things you're going to have to do.
And then they're going to be emergency
These are required items. We have trucks with 240,000 miles on them.
Pickup truck is going to die, and they're
Yeah, that's close to 200,000 miles.
Yeah, we're going to be down a truck.
And then, and then they're going to say, well, why didn't you prioritize at the top? Well, how do you want me to prioritize a pickup truck over a public safety radio?
Yeah.
Again, we know
Or the public safety of a, of a dis-repaired place gate.
Right, that's, yeah. No, I think, I, I'm comfortable with explaining this the way it is.
Or a tree that's going to fall on you.
Top five with the last few, and again.
Do you want me to recap one more time?
Yeah, let's do that.
Sure. So highest priority CNR items, the radio system feasibility study phase two, the ice rink condenser, pool fencing, the police cruisers, and the ashbore mitigation, so identifying, again, those five items as the highest priority. Playscapes would be identified as the lowest priority. The remainder of the CNR projects would be flagged as medium priority, and that we would remove the wayfinding signage at savings of $15,000.
So in all total, we've given them 230 of cash savings, plus an alternative of 600,000 to fund elsewhere, so while technically not a cut, we've given them 800 and change in alternative fund savings, which basically chews up the entire increase in the debt service budget.
Yeah, that would
And, and within that, we've also taken a, a number of items that are still in the CNR, but the reality is the dollars are coming out of tar, the trust
Yeah, they know that.
the sewer treatment plant.
Right.
Yep, you're right, don't we? That's a great point.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't prioritize those, because we're, we, we've identified those as funding sources, and those
Right, that's a different funding source.
Leave them alone, yeah.
And your top five falls below the 416, it's 340, 700.
You like that? Bet you if you add the library thing in, it'll hit right around it.
We could, we could add the handler as the sixth item, and that gets you closer to the 416 routine payback period, not that
412, isn't it?
Or 14.
There you go.
As opposed to the trucks.
So we're two grand over.
Okay. Am I hearing consensus then to add the book handler as a sixth item of high priority to get closer to that payback method?
Puts us at the 416.
Got it.
I'm good.
Good, great.
Still feeling bad about the pickup truck.
Tom's truck's number seven. Seriously, we got to get him a truck.
I know, I think that pickup truck has to be the next in line.
This time.
Yeah, no, not the other time. The other time, he has too many trucks, why is he going? Hey, he's not here, we should, um
Yeah.
You know what happens?
Oh, no.
We're going to get to his budget right now in the operating section.
We talk operating?
Yes, yes.
Would it be helpful if we recapped the items that Maria shared at the beginning of the presentation?
Absolutely. Sorry, I'm just getting another sheet of paper, I ran out of space.
That are not already included in that?
No, so every, the things that are, just so we're clear.
Okay. Okay, so, again, for operating, again, if we use the 14, 8, 8% scenario that the Board of Finance endorsed, but based on February claims, again, we factored in a reduction in the health insurance premium to a 12% increase, which generated $86,000 in savings, so we have included, included that here. But, again, our recommendation to the Board of Finance was that if they do go with that scenario, we would suggest, again, an additional transfer into the health insurance reserve. That's, that would come in terms of, again, it could either be handled through a year-end transfer, assigned fund balance, or unassigned fund balance. We also, within the operating budget, increased our assumption from 0.85% in grand list growth to 0.92%, which provided an additional 60,000 in revenue. This scenario here also eliminated the EDC marketing and branding materials, that would be $18,000 in savings. We also proposed reducing an admin assistant position in engineering by five hours per week to help offset the cost of the increase in hours for the library admin assistant. This particular reduction in staff hours would generate about $7,953 in savings. At, based on some discussion with the Board of Finance, we would also move $77,546 out of contingency into the police salary line items, since that contract has now settled. And, let's see, those five items are changes to the operating budget, either revenues or expenditures, as, as you're seeing here.
And then the 30,000?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, yes, sorry, and also, the additional $30,000 to fund the deficit that would exist in the park and rec special revenue fund. Thank you.
So we sent 475, so what does ours look like with those changes? Sweet, we caught it.
Well, we were at 519 by the time we left the Board of Finance meeting, because they had you put in the health insurance increase of 14%
Right.
Close to 10. So you did, cut from 519 to 471.
Technically, we've cut from 15%, right?
Absolutely.
Because we had the, we had the, the special revenue fund in there.
Got it.
That's right.
We're done.
Those are the numbers I'm counting, Sean.
So I know this is, there's no more sharpening of the pencil on the contingency, we're, we're, we're ninety-nine on that one.
So the contingency, we only budgeted anticipated settlements for the contracts that we have due, which are five contracts. Without giving away too much of my negotiating position, we did try to look at statewide trends for negotiated settlements to arrive at a number that we thought might be reasonable to budget for.
And the reason I ask, they picked at that one pretty hard, and again, I don't think they have the same appreciation that you and we do about, we have to leave that number alone.
Absolutely, yeah, that's, again, they're gonna pay it one way or the other.
But we've asked about it, we've looked at it, and we're comfortable with it, or at least, that's the recommendation we're getting. What about, and again, I know I'm being a pain in the neck, but, I mean, five grand, ten grand, twenty-five in drainage salt, I mean, our salt budget was under budget this year, I know they're not popular places, but, you know, with transfers, I mean, we, we're always gonna fund those, and I'm not suggesting we intentionally under-budget any of that, but is, I mean, as you looked at it, any opportunity there?
Yeah, I think it would be challenging, so one thing, we took a really hard look at making sure that if we were including something in the operating budget, it was truly a planned expense and a planned use. We also looked at our most recent historical spends on accounts, to really make sure that we were right sizing the, the dollar values that we had in those particular accounts within the operating budget. So I am fearful that, let's say if we were to just sort of take, I'm just gonna come up with a number, five thousand dollars out of drainage, I would be concerned that we'd really just be under-budgeting for that item, because the number that we put in is against sort of the true cost of, of providing or maintaining the level of service we currently have, let's say for draining, or for fixing potholes, or materials that we're purchasing for our average number of storms that we could reasonably anticipate in a year, so it's not to say that we couldn't take money out of those accounts, again, it's just that we would most likely end up then just overspending in those accounts, and having to try to clean that up at year-end with hopefully savings and, and maybe other areas, or again, excess revenues.
Yeah.
Now, um, so, these numbers net out expenses and revenues, are there any revenue projections that potentially, with a double look, would be adjusted favorably, or...
Um, we, we did include governor's proposed numbers for our revenue estimates from the state in this particular analysis, and, again, we did take another revised look at grand list growth, based on some stuff that's just, again, sort of coming online, and as we're refining that, so that was that slight increase projection. In terms of the more departmental revenue estimates, I, I, boy, I'd be, I'd be hard-pressed to move those, we actually did spend a considerable amount of time this year really working on those numbers, and, you know, at least this point earlier, in the past, our departments weren't typically consulted on, on that, so we did work really hard with the, the department heads to really make sure that what we were estimating was, again, sort of a realistic number of what we could reasonably anticipate. So besides moving, I think, that grand list number, I think I would be reluctant to move our revenue numbers, how, how do you feel about that, Amy?
Yeah, the only thing I can think of offhand is the investment income. I think we're pretty conservative on that.
I'm not sure that's going up quickly.
Right. So, um, like, we're estimated to get about three-hundred-and-ten thousand this year, and we budgeted two-fifty for next year. That's the only thing I can think of offhand that might be a slight increase.
I wish we were getting three-ten this year?
Yeah.
I mean, interest rates are at least staying the same, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe that's one area, if you felt comfortable and, and didn't want to be conservative on it, we could potentially bump that up a little bit.
Do you have a particular reason for that decrease, or...
Just, you never know what's gonna happen.
I can appreciate that.
What's the rate, the, the, assume rate behind that?
No, that's just comparison into prior years and...
Right.
So would, what did we do two...
No.
What did we do up?
So did, two years ago, did we do that this year?
Um, so this tr, this shows the trend, so like, fiscal year eighteen, we had four-hundred-and-six thousand in income, and then fiscal year nineteen, the, only the first six months, we have the three-ten, so it's likely to be a higher than the three-ten, but, again, the two-fifty was just conservative, so we could go up, but...
No, I don't want to play with your assumptions on that.
But we could flag that as a potential item for their consideration, again, we did bump up our, at least the base estimate, because, again, if you look at fifteen, excuse me, fiscal nineteen, the budget, I think it was around one-seventy-five that we had budgeted for investment income, so based on our numbers coming in higher, we did bump that up to two-fifty, but again, if you wanted to at least maybe flag that for the Board of Finance to maybe think about bumping that up a little further, we could, we could certainly share that with them.
Does that three-fourteen still have the internal service, or the non-lapsing account money?
Three-fourteen? What, three-fourteen?
Yeah, the percentage increase, the three-fourteen.
Oh, no.
It did not, that came out.
They'll be meeting, uh, the Board of Ed will be meeting tomorrow evening, and I know that they do plan to talk about any recommendations around the non-lapsing account, as well as any potential further reductions that they might suggest from their budget.
Yep. I mean, based on the, the discussions the other night, I think we fulfilled our obligations this evening, and I think there are a couple of pathways for the Board of Finance to continue to manage that mill rate to that number, or potentially even lower if they so choose. But again, I'm having the conversation with the debt service on a longer basis, so I'm com, I mean, again, I, I'm comfortable with what we've got here.
I am too.
I am too, I just wanna, just one thing, so this, this assumes, what, the ninety-eight-point-five mill rate?
Don't do it.
Correct.
Don't say it.
It's not our determination, but it is fair for us to look at the accurate collection rate.
Just to tease ourselves?
Don't do it, that's how we build reserves.
Or transparent decision-making on, okay.
She'd put ninety-nine-seven-two, shouldn't you?
Why just go to ninety-nine?
It's like ninety-nine-seven-two, isn't it?
Like ninety-nine-five. Ninety-nine-five.
With our tax sales, aren't they gonna go up?
We've actually already collected a lot of money.
Yeah. Okay. So it just reinforces, Sean, the wisdom of your recommendation, that we're good where we are right now.
It's like you're a politician.
There's a wee bit of, there's a wee bit, okay, yep.
Would it be helpful, similar to capital, if I just quickly recap for operating the items that are included, just to make sure, again, that everybody's comfortable? Okay.
Sure.
So for operating, we have the increasing the grand list growth projection from point-eight-five to point-nine-two, eliminating the EDC marketing and branding materials, the savings of eighteen thousand, reducing the engineering admin assistant position by five hours per week from thirty hours to twenty-five hours, a savings of seven thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars, reducing the health insurance contribution from the Board of Finance suggested fourteen-point-eight-eight percent to an increase of twelve percent, and then moving the seventy-seven-five-four-six from contingency to the police salary line item, and taking care of the general fund contribution to the park and rec fund of thirty thousand to close the deficit in that fund. And there's consensus on that?
Sure.
Yes.
And I forgot my glasses, I'm having a hard time with that, Amy, can you just read for them what the mill rate would be and the impact on, on the taxpayer?
Sure, so the mill rate is thirty-seven-point-five-six, and the median home impact is two-hundred-and-forty-five dollars.
Amy, is that taking the account the eliminations of capital items that we did?
Yeah.
All of them?
And does that, um, does that include the fire district?
No.
Portion.
No. We never include that.
It doesn't?
That's the one-point-one-four, no, never mind.
It's not on there.
Yeah, this, maybe ten to twenty basis point swing with them, if you look historically at, you know, how they vary, but...
So, what would you recommend in the way of a, a motion?
Sure, so we went back and looked at what you did last year, and essentially, the minutes reflected each of those areas that you had consensus around, and then the, sorry, let me just grab that. The motion was essentially to, to recommend to the Board of Finance the budget with these revisions, you know, as agreed upon this evening. Let me just pull that up.
Let me make this easy.
Sorry, I've got, I've got the motion, but it essentially would be a motion to recommend to the Board of Finance these changes as presented. Last year, also for the minutes, we did take a quick break and just calculated, you know, what those numbers were, but again, Amy could probably just read off of the Levy Calc what the new town budget would be.
Considering the Board of Finance approved sending our budgets without knowing what the number is, I'm not sure, I'm worried.
Well, they already sent it, so...
They did.
Don't they have to change it?
They do.
Well, so at public hearing, right, at public hearing officially, what was sent to public hearing was what the Board of Finance sent from the meeting on the nineteenth, but again, this will be an opportunity for them, you know, following the public hearing, to have conversations about your additional recommendations, as well as the Board of Ed's additional recommendations, and then sort of to finalize.
Right, but we can't make a motion changing the budget that they, I mean, we can only recommend that they make these changes.
Yeah, that's what Maria suggested.
So we, it doesn't really matter what the total number is, because we can't change that at that, this point.
So I move that we recommend to our friends on the Board of Finance the changes that we discussed in the capital improvement plan, the C and R plan, and the operating budget as captured and read back by the town manager.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
With one friendly amendment, that we also make a suggestion to review the investment line item for potential changes, and to consider using the designated Hartford Fund Balance for paving, and the remainder to solve the insurance fund challenges.
I accept that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, thank you to you guys and all town staff, we appreciate it, hanging in there with us again.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's been helpful.
Okay, moving on to item B, tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of four thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and twenty-five cents, and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item C, is there a motion effective February twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to accept a donation from St. Catherine of Siena with our thanks, in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of supporting our food closet program?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective February twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to grant permission to State Representative John Hampton to use the Simsbury Town Hall parking lot, nine thirty-three Hot Meadow Street, for the temporary placement of large dumpsters and recycling bins for Simsbury Cleanup Day, April twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Hartford Marathon Foundation High Intensity Interval Training Event as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Talkeet Mountain Music Festival as presented, and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item G, is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Department Chicken Barbecue as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
Heck, yes.
So that was a...
Oh, sorry.
I'll second that.
Second it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item H, is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Tooten Hills PTO Duck Race as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved, as long as somebody else decorates it.
Got it.
The second that we put Peterson in the dunk tank.
I'm not here that day.
Dunk or duck.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're getting punch kids.
That motion carries. Item I, is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Simsbury Mini Maker Fair as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion...
Guys were worried about that?
Effective March...
Really?
They are on top of everything, man.
That was worth three and a half hours.
Your motion, March twenty, effective, uh, March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen WOC MS as presented, and authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Mainly Marathons as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there item, uh, gee, I just want, is that L or I? I'm just, it's late, anyway, the next one on the agenda?
L.
Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to approve the public gathering application for the twenty-nineteen Circus Schmerkus as presented, and to authorize the issuance of the public gathering permit?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. As part of Circus Schmerkus, temporary tents need to be put up on the property, and the Performing Arts Center is requesting we waive the building permit fees, which amount to a little over forty dollars. Is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to authorize the town manager to sign applications related to the construction of temporary circus tents at the Simsbury Performing Arts Center on behalf of the town of Simsbury, and to approve the request for the fee waivers corresponding with the building permit applications for the construction of temporary circus tents?
I'll move that with a, can we find a way to not have Missy have to sit here for four hours for forty-two dollars, please?
Mr. I don't make enough to sit here this long.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night, Missy.
Good night.
Sorry.
Item N, so, little bit of history on this item, currently, the Open Space Committee is focused on the acquisition of open space, and at the last Open Space Committee meeting, the committee expressed a desire to also manage the stewardship of open space, that's responsibility that's currently under the umbrella of Conservation Commission. Our understanding is that the Board of Selectmen does have the ability to move that authority, and there are several advantages that we could talk about. For tonight's discussion, I wanted to see if there would be support in referring that question to the Conservation Commission for their input, since they currently manage this, or if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to take those.
So if they say no, are we still gonna do it?
I think we should use it as a, as a, a data point.
Because I'm not a fan of referring things to people if we're just gonna do whatever we want anyway.
Yeah, I think if we want to make a decision, we should make a decision, because...
If we're gonna listen to them and potentially say no, yeah, but...
I think it, personally, I think it's, I personally think it's important to refer to them, and I do think this requires a larger conversation, so, and I personally would be receptive to what their feedback is, so...
I'm not suggesting I'm not, I just wanna, you know, because sometimes in the past, we've referred things, and then we still do.
Yeah. This is one with, with some subtlety, and I think it would be important that we have a thoughtful conversation around it.
Fair enough.
So is there a motion effective March twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, to refer consideration of the Open Space Committee's request to the Conservation Commission? The purpose of the referral is to seek the Commission's viewpoint on delegating open space stewardship and land management to the Open Space Committee, a referral response is respectfully requested by April seventeenth, twenty-nineteen.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Well, can we qualify that somehow by saying that we would like, you know, we appreciate, you know, their input and, and look for their opinion, but that we anticipate having further discussion on this, that this is not the end of the discussion?
I think that's inherently understood with a referral, isn't it?
I don't know, I'm...
I mean, we're not delegating our authority to...
Authority. I know, I just don't want to create an impression that, you know, they're going to go to a great deal of time and effort, and I don't want to waste volunteers' time to make a recommendation, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that it's coming back to us for a final decision.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's inherent that there is at least one person from Conservation Commission on the open space, or is it...
There is.
Okay, and the chairman's on there, so...
Okay. Thought as we're all clear, I just don't want to be...
When we discuss this on open space, I mean, she felt it was important that we refer, that they be able to have a conversation as a committee.
Right.
Sure, and what I could do, so when you send a referral to another group, I follow up with correspondence from me, just sort of outlining, you know, please return it to me, et cetera, by the state. The board is going to consider it at a future meeting, so I could just be very specific and say that we hope to address it at the 4/22 meeting, and I could just add that right in the referral memo.
I agree with Chris. This is part of a larger conversation than, you know, just that piece of it. While it's an important piece, there's more to it.
So, yeah, so at this point, the motion's been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item O, so in your packet is a proposed MOU that codifies the membership composition and the responsibilities of the Retirement Plan Subcommittee. Were there any questions or feedback on that?
So if the Board of Finance set it up, why are we doing it?
Oh.
Bree?
Shalhain, Bree.
Okay, sure. So, you know, I think it was in part in the spirit of collaboration, so under the charter, the Board of Finance is supposed to consult with both the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed. So the thought was, you know, let's clearly establish what the expectations are of this, of the Subcommittee, and make sure that sort of all of the parties are on board with this new direction for it. Essentially, what had happened was, is a Board of Finance member was concerned that the way that the Retirement Plan Subcommittee might not quite fit, you know, with the charter language. Bob took a look at that issue for us and said that, you know, we should probably tighten that up, a couple, again, a couple of the areas around the functions and responsibilities of the committee. So I think this was just an effort to try and clearly establish the expectations for the committee, but also to make sure that, you know, your board, as all the Board of Education, are comfortable with it, since it was, again, my understanding, and it wasn't here at the time, but my understanding is, is that that committee was set up to sort of be a collaborative effort between the three boards, that essentially that all three boards sort of agreeing to this, to saying, yes, we're in agreement, that this will be, you know, the duties and responsibilities of this group. But, Chris, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, I think that's good. I think it's a clarification of the rules of engagement. It, the Subcommittee is clearly a Subcommittee to the authority of the Board of Finance. I think what had happened over the times is the Subcommittee had drifted into actually making decisions, as opposed to those decisions fully going up to the Board of Finance and being reviewed and vetted and then taking accountability. So I think it just tightens up. The protocol is consistent with the Charter and, to me, very consistent with what our intent would be, so...
The only section that I sort of have questioned was the community members at large. I did go back and listen to their discussion on tape, but I, I think that if the Board of Finance is going to assume the role of being in charge of this committee, that maybe that shouldn't be the Board of Selectmen, that suggests the community members at large, because it seemed to be the thrust of their, you know, their motive here in doing this, and I don't disagree with it, but I think to be consistent, that they should have the control over the membership also. I just wouldn't want there to be any friction, not that I ever think there is, but...
That makes sense to me.
You ask a stupid question. I'm sorry, my God.
My only concern, and I think that's a very good point, Cheryl, but the Board of Selectmen are the appointing authority.
Well, but not for this. So what they're saying is the Board of Finance is the appointing authority here, and...
Does the Charter give them that power?
All very good questions, and all questions I also asked Bob.
I mean, I'm not trying to nickel and dime it, but I thought we were the appointing authority.
Sure, so that was my question to Bob as well. Bob said that because this is a Subcommittee of the Board of Finance, that he does think that they could in fact appoint the community members. I do think that the Board of Finance isn't really set up for that, and I think they sort of acknowledged that, and their thought or recommendation to everybody was that, you know, your board does do appointments so frequently, and if you could at least offer recommendations on the community members at large to them, I think that they thought that there was some value in having you offer suggestions or recommendations. We do have two community members at large who have been serving for a very long time, so I think if ultimately you are supportive of this memorandum of understanding, I could certainly reach out to those two members to see if they're interested in continuing to serve. Again, my understanding is they have been, again, serving for a great length of time, and they've added some very good value to the group, so...
Okay.
I'm just, you know, I'm just a little uncomfortable with that. I mean, if they're going to take control of this committee, they should take control of this, so...
They said they wanted our opinion, so we'll give it to them.
Well, and my opinion is that they should appoint their community members at large if we are going to have them, and I thought, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the community members aren't large, at large actually aren't mentioned in the Charter, so we have only done this as a sort of longstanding practice. It doesn't actually conform with the Charter to appoint community members, so...
Can they vote?
Yes, yeah.
Is that true, or...
Yeah, they would be able to vote.
But it's a recommendation. They can't actually enact a policy, so...
I know.
Right. The Board of Finance still makes the change.
Well, but if we're cleaning it up, I'm just saying.
So I'm agnostic on that point, which means I'd be willing to support that, Cheryl, and if there's consensus among the board to make that recommendation, then I would be supportive of that.
I mean, I bring it up just for consistency and for the fact that the Charter doesn't seem to address that.
So you'd be proposing that there are no longer community members?
No, but if the Board of Finance decides that they do want to appoint community members at large, and that seems to be their decision, then they should do the appointing.
But they are. That's what this says.
They would be under agreement, so...
I know, but that they don't need us to do, you know, to do that.
Take the recommendation.
So you would be saying to take the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen completely out of the process?
I don't see why not, but, you know.
What recommendation?
Well, then, why isn't the Board of Ed, the Board of Ed has the same stake in this, why aren't they recommending community members? I mean, I just don't understand why the...
I guess the rationale is because we do that a lot.
I...
We sort of have a mechanism in place.
A place, yeah.
I do understand your point, Cheryl.
But, I mean, again, you know, we're supposed to have the same footing as the Board of Education here, and we're not asking them to do that, so...I don't know. I just thought if we're going to clean this up, then you should be consistent, so...
Well, the cleanness would be, they're the authority.
The Board of Finance does it...
They would identify who the at-large members are.
Because really, the Board of Ed could say, well, we have people too, you know, why can't we?
But that...
I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to understand the logic of that.
Because they don't want to vet the members, because that's what we do. It's purely about process versus, they still retain the appointment authority, but it's like the town committee's vetting board and commission members for us. And then essentially, I mean, we do a check and we, when we look into it, but we're not holding hearings upon hearings for all of our volunteer boards.
I understand that, but where does the Board of Ed fit in for that, then? They have the same recommending authority that we do on this Subcommittee.
So just put it in conjunction with the Board of Education, then.
But...
No, that creates a complication.
I think we're making it even more complicated than that. I mean, I will concede the point if you all think that's okay, but that's...
I don't sense the energy there.
It seems to be inconsistent.
I mean, I'm fine with taking it out.
But if you like to be inconsistent...
I'm fine with taking it out, but I mean, it's...this is their board, so they can have it appointed any way they want. So if they ask us for a recommendation, we just, I mean, we're going to say no.
I would suggest we leave it as it is. I mean, you know, the points. Yeah.
Is there a motion effective March 25th, 2019 to approve the proposed Retirement Plan Subcommittee Memorandum of Understanding as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to appointments and resignations, there's some appointments to the Sustainability Team. Is there a motion effective March 25th, 2019 to appoint the following people to the Sustainability Team? Rich Cortez of the Planning Commission, Sherri Kalnun, Mike Tonka, and Mark Scully of the Clean Energy Task Force, Jeff Tindall of the Board of Education, and Sarah Kramer from Culture Parks and Rec.
Any objection to that Tindall guy?
Just kidding. Don't put that in the minutes.
Don't know, put that in the minutes. Just on the video. Jeff, I'm kidding.
Live mic.
This is late at night, punchy, where things begin to really go wrong.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, any changes to the special meeting on March 2nd?
Brilliantly captured, as always.
Any changes proposed for the regular meeting on March 11th?
Even more eloquent than the first one.
And those stand as presented. Any Selectmen liaison or Subcommittee reports?
Just, I would like to follow up a little on our comments from public audience on the 3/50th. Since I am your official liaison to that committee, I think I have feel a responsibility to go back to them with a recommendation on what to do now. So if this board wants to tell me something to tell them, I think they're meeting next week, but...
I would recommend that we look for ways to fund it in our current fiscal year through transfers, because I did agree with their concerns that we don't fund community organizations, you know, where possible, but this is not the same thing as the ambulance, this is not the same thing as other boards and commissions. We asked them to do this essentially by, you know, having you start it up a couple of years ago, and again.
Well, I don't think that, you know, and I appreciate that, but the thirty-five thousand is not going to solve the problem here. I mean, the problem is the rest of the requests.
Insurance as well?
The insurance and the PAC rental fees, and, you know, there's a lot of other...
So I think one of the larger questions was whether it would make sense of making it an official town committee, which I think would allow them to use our insurance and would add process but could save money.
Correct, right. So one possibility, and Cheryl and I had corresponded about that, would be to form it as an official town committee. The appointments would have to come through you, but with that, they would also have to adhere to our purchasing policies and procedures, which means that either, we'd have to, just from a workload perspective, figure it out if it would either be Lisa Cream's admin assistant, or if it would be Tom Tiberski's admin assistant, would be responsible for processing the payments. But as the department head, they would have to, you know, again, adhere to the purchasing policies. They would have to, they'd have to pre-approve purchases before they would make, we'd have to be using purchase orders. Also, I would have to be signing off on contracts, which would require review by Bob. So, I mean, there is a certain level of process by becoming a formal town committee that it would add some layers, that up until this point, they haven't necessarily had those constraints. They've had a lot of freedom, where again, this would come with some additional constraints. Not to say that it's not impossible, but it would alleviate, I think, the insurance issue. Two of our biggest challenges when we reviewed this with Kerma, our insurance carrier, was that it's not an official town committee, so we have no control whatsoever over the decisions. And the second piece was that we were also not serving as the fiduciary. So I think the plan initially was for Main Street to serve as the fiduciary for this, but again, if it were to become an official town committee, we would have to manage that in-house through our town staff.
How would that work if someone wanted to make, if business or an individual wanted to make a donation and wanted to be able to write that donation off?
So you'll probably recall for Simsbury Celebrates, again, that when we did receive donations in excess of fifteen hundred dollars, we did have to bring those donations to the board, and then we just deposited those into the special revenue fund we have for Simsbury Celebrates. So I would anticipate that we would need to do something similar, set up a special revenue fund for the 350th event, and then per the ordinance, any donation in excess of fifteen hundred, we would have to bring to you.
So for sponsorship opportunities, the same would apply?
I think, I think it might apply. I'd have to look at that a little bit further, but I think sponsorships, we could treat similarly to a donation.
Yeah, go back and look at how we handled the PAC, right or wrong, because we never approved sponsorships when the PAC was under our control, before we spun them off.
Oh, interesting. Interesting.
I'm not saying that's right, but we never officially accepted them.
That's true. That's true.
They never came through us.
They never came through us.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Well, and there is some, you know, concern on the committee that, you know, there's been a lot of talk and discussion about existing town events and how this would conflict with events that are already on the schedule, and, you know, they understand that. So I think they're at the point where either we're going to just sort of be organizational for events that already are planned by other groups, and somehow make the 350 part of the celebration, or we're going to be a separate committee, you know, for these one-time events, and there may be some conflict, so that's...
I've heard the grumblings. I...it's late.
I know it is.
It's not time for a lecture, but I find it hard to believe that the volunteers and the adults in this community can't find a way to share events to get this done, and the grumblings that I'm hearing of between different organizations are childish about who owns why. It's, we're better than that, and we need to move past that. Either we want to celebrate this town and have it be an economic driver, showcase businesses, be a little bit creative, but my understanding is nobody's trying to step on people's toes. There's been lots of communication, we're a year and a half plus out from some of these events, and, I'm sorry, there's a really big sandbox in this town, and we can play in it. The conversations around, you're going to take from my event, that it's completely unquantifiable, I mean, this is...
It's territory.
I know.
What, so the, just, and I apologize, if you set that up and the, to address the Board of Finances, I think I've raised some questions the other night, so you fund the thirty-five thousand dollars at a time, which we all, I think we understand what the intention of those monies were for, what then is the, what is then the understanding, is this becoming a town committee, does that change how the thirty-five thousand dollars is given back to the town at all, and how it's structured, what's required of it?
Sort of become part of the revenue stream for the event.
Exactly. So with the special revenue fund, if there was any excess balance at the end of the event, let's say twenty thousand dollars, there was, you know, twenty thousand dollars left at the end of the entire, oops, 350th celebration. If it's in the special revenue fund, that money is in our possession, so again, ultimately we would have control over how we invest that twenty thousand dollars, whereas, again, if it's with the other committee, we don't have that control. So I think that that is a bit of a game changer.
So that, so then, I'm sorry, I'm still not clear.
I'm sorry.
Is it then make, does that make, would that make this, the Board of Finance more comfortable with the concept?
I don't know, we'd have to bring it to them.
That was one of their concerns, but their bigger concern was they didn't...
See a budget.
They didn't agree. They didn't see the budget, et cetera.
Where's it going to come from? It's clearly, well, we have this deposit coming up, but what exactly is that based on?
They looked at it as a...
Well, we did, but that deposit was personally guaranteed by the chair, and we canceled it, because as soon as the Board of Finance said no, we didn't think it was fair to have our chairperson personally guaranteeing a deposit for a large event that may or may not happen at this point, so...
No, and that was particularly troubling that, I appreciate that he did that, but no, he shouldn't be taking on that responsibility.
Yeah, so I went to him the day after the Board of Finance meeting and recommended that we start, you know...
So do you want to work with that?
So I just need to know what you want me to go to them with. I'm trying to act as the liaison between this board and that committee as it stands now. I mean, I guess we would have to ask them if they want to participate in a town committee at this point. I mean, we may be starting from scratch here.
I think that's the first step.
I would like this board to get a consensus that this is an important event that we should be getting behind, that the town manager is working to put, dotting the Ts and crossing, dotting the Is and crossing the Ts, to put this together, and within the next month, we'll have a more formal structure. I think you're going to that group and saying, this is how we see it being solved, by them becoming a formal committee of the town.
So the last question is, would having a formal structure under the town umbrella solve our problems with the PAC?
I don't think for the rental fees, for like the base rental fees. Again, if they're willing to give a little bit on that, because again, you know, one of the things that we had talked about during a logistics meeting with the committee is that, you know, the PAC does have certain fixed costs, so there's sort of a menu of services, you know, do they, things that the 350th Committee would need to think about when using the space, you know, do they want to use the Portelets?
Right.
Do they want to use their trash vendor? Do they need assistance with security services? Are they going to coordinate the food vendors on their own and obtain, you know, make sure all the necessary permits are obtained? But then there is also sort of a cleanup fee, if you will, I mean, there's just cleanup costs associated when there's an event down there, so that is part of what they factor into the rental fee. And so there are costs to the PAC if we do hold an event down there, and so they were trying their best, you know, to itemize for the committee that cares the things you could choose to purchase from us, and then trying to give the lowest possible rental fee that would just cover basically like the restoration of the facility after its use.
My understanding is they were also trying to negotiate revenue sharing.
For one event, right.
Which, if it's a town event, that's off the table.
Yeah.
No more, no more revenue sharing, and they get the private duty rate that they asked us to give them for this, so that would lower the security cost.
Sure, so the PAC board was considering their September Fest event, because the direction, I believe, again, my understanding is, is that that board was taking with that event, and the proposed Country Fair event were only about three weeks apart, and so I think that, you know, the PAC board was saying that unless we partnered together on that event, they had to take a very hard and serious look as to whether or not it made sense for them in that year to proceed with their September Fest event, which has sort of been a signature event for them for a long time, and it's a fundraiser for them, so I know, and I can't speak for their board, but that was, you know, some conversations that they were having, is, is there an opportunity for us to partner and sort of bring together September Fest and the Country Fair for that one year, so that our events aren't, you know, essentially competing with one another.
But, on the other side of that equation, is that this was a town celebration, and that if we were going to get sponsors who anticipated, you know, making a donation to the town, that is different than contributing to the revenue of the PAC.
And I'm sorry, but if it's three weeks apart, I mean, with the number, we have the fly-in, we've got the craft show, I mean, we got something every day in this town, so to say that something is competing three weeks later, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not in that business, but I reject that, it's...
My opinion is that it'll be driven more by the weather on that particular day.
Well, and that was part of what, and Steve made this point, I think, very well at one of the logistics meetings, was that, you know, because of the weather, having more events is actually more favorable than having fewer events, because if, we all found that out last year with the Chili Festival, you get rain on one day, everybody's done, you know, and by spreading it out, you know, at least you can save some.
Plus, you've got a nice cadence, you've got September Fest, you would potentially have this, and then you've got the Chili Festival. Got a lot going on to drive economic...
I think we're past the conflict point, let's move to the...
Oh, I am, I was passing the conflict one this morning.
They still need to go back to them and say, do you want to do this under a new format, because that's different.
Just one other exploration, so we're talking about funding this, I like, I've always thought if we could fund it out of this year, that's great, but I didn't think we were necessarily heading towards a large surplus at year-end, I might be wrong, I mean, we should just assess if we're in a position to actually be able to make that commitment or not.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest, is by the time we come back with the structure, if we were going to identify the funds, where would they come from? Because I think one of the Board of Finance members pushed us on that, despite the rejection seemed to be potentially receptive to us doing it ourselves. Maybe.
So we've got a month-ish, get that committee a chance to talk.
Well, okay, I'm going to be quite frank with you here, if we're going to ask these people to reorganize into a town committee and then still deny the funding, that's...
We can't give them funds we don't have, so we need to come up with it, and they need to, if they don't want to dance with us, that's fine.
No, I know.
We've got process, too. We got, I mean, we went hard at the Board of Finance the other night, it was rejected.
Yep, I understand it, I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
Agreed, and we're not setting them on a full X here, but at the same time, if we can't come up with the funds, they need to understand that we can't give it to them.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a possibility.
Yep.
But I think we're going to try, right?
Or we just...